Morning, we'll start the meeting for February 27th. Roll call please, Michelle Watson.
Grant.
Here.
Words? Paul.
Here.
Ellen.
Here.
Curtain back.
Here. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item one, agenda received as proposed for amendment.
Uh huh.
I was making a possible change in that.
Yep.
Uh, could we amend the agenda as add a possible board action today?
I'm trying to group the two, but I was gonna say.
So we've got the, uh, the agenda for discussion possible board action for consideration of all aspects of budget.
Need a motion for that? Need a, yeah, other motion.
Motion.
Close that.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, we're good?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same side, motion carries. Alright, so item two, budget work sessions, discussion, possible board action for consideration of all aspects of the budget choices. How any budget will start. Michelle's got anything in particular that she wanted to bring up before item A?
Just gotta find the team's link so I can get it. Yes.
You wanna do it through team or do it through the?
If I just do that.
Doesn't matter, I can do that.
Go ahead and switch me. Okay, I thought we would start, we didn't get to this Tuesday. I thought we would start with the property tax asking worksheet. This is a format I think you're, you're used to seeing. This, I have just, I've not updated any of the line items, so you still see the 407 kind of gap, if you will, in the general fund levy. But I have updated, I believe, the other funds. So you can see that our total property tax asking now, and we're asking for collections now of 5% more than last year. We had started out about 4.6, but we made changes that are increasing the general supplemental levy and the rural levy. So that 5% in collections translates to this chart. Act one is, as it stands today, you can see an urban residential property would have an increase of about 4.21 per $120,000 of their assessed value. So only half, about half of the value of your home is taxable, but if your home is worth $200,000, then you're gonna be around just under the $100,000 level, for example. We tried to do this so you can apply it to your own property. Commercial properties see a 2.24% increase, industrial 2.08, rural residential are at about 3.54% increase, and ag property at a 4.25% increase. I also included in the lower chart what it was with our initial requests. So you can, and the, you can see the large differences there are really in the rural residential and rural agricultural, because that's where we have changes. The next topic, we had a lot of, I had requests for some different options for non-bargaining pay. What was incorporated in the original budget was 3% increases. So I've given you some options here. I've got non-bargaining at three and a quarter, and I had also been asked to use, I believe the calculation is the weighted average of what the bargaining units received across the boards. So that math worked out to 3.33%. So I have calculated that in option two. So your non-bargaining is 62 positions, and that is the total cost that you're seeing there of the salary increase and the payroll tax increases that would go along with that. Option three was just, is just being put out there for illustration. Someone had mentioned what if the next category of people, which is our non-bargaining, are at GS, grade GS 26 and above. Mostly they are your non-elected directors. And in the original budget, they were budgeted at 2 and a quarter percent. I was asked to tell you the cost if we raise that to 2.75%, and that's the third, 3,877. And if we raise it to the 3.33, then that would be 11,068.89. So then the third option shows both the non-bargaining below 3.26 and above grade 26, all at 3 and a quarter percent. And so those increases would be that 15,000 plus the 10. Hopefully that makes sense to everyone. And I've also put in the electeds, again, these were budgeted at 3%. And this is just a summary that shows alternative one was using the increase to 10% for all except the alternative five. And then alternative two, I was asked what if it was seven and five? So those are the costs if we make those changes. If you go to the full 10%, it's 153,000 total cost. If you go to seven, it's about 70, close to 78,000. And I do have more elected officials. There are two positions on here that are, look at the second set of three columns, the human resources proposal columns. There's two that show an increase of 10.2%. And Amanda spoke to you about that last week. That's to have the treasurer, the recorder, and the auditor all just be at the same amount. They were off just very slight amounts. This would correct that, but that it takes a little bit more the first time. And it looks like, darn it, I forgot to fix that in the 7% one. So we'll, yeah, if you choose and you want to do both, I have to correct that.
Can you go back to the other slide that had the, uh, the non-bargaining? So just to keep it all in front of us, the 3% was, what was that dollar amount, the original?
You mean for non-bargaining?
Yeah.
Boy, oh, I don't know that one. Wanna shut that off and I'll, yup. Thank you.
Oh, Chris has joined us now.
Good, cuz I thought.
While we wait, Amanda, that was the group that was getting the 3% increase anyway for merit, right?
So, yes, somewhere, not all of them, no. So right now, there's like 16 people that are lower part of their range, where they're, um, maybe they're newer to their role, don't have as much experience, so they are having that 3% step increase, which is similar to the unions. So when you start a union job, you're on step one, you're gonna go to step two, three, four, five, all the way. Some are as high as 13, others, you know, low as six or seven. So there's 16 non-bargaining that are in that group. And then there's like 29 that are either getting 2% and 28 that are getting 1%, which are like the lowest merit increases that we gave across whether you're non-bargaining or union.
Okay.
So. Most, I would say, with this, it's just like the unions. You know, the unions, you see 3%, 3.5, they're also getting a step that's usually anywhere from 2.5 to 4%. So they're really getting like a 7% raise if you're in non-bargaining. Similar, a little bit less.
I, I actually couldn't, I, I don't have an amount of the increase that non-bargaining was getting over 25. It just isn't something that's easy to pull out. I couldn't get that to you, it would take a little bit. Alright. Now you probably put that back on now. Sorry. Thank you. Yeah, and then I'm not where I should be.
And Michelle, um, this is Chris. In all these scenarios, um, this all factors against the, the, the 3.5 in the, in the general basic levy, correct?
Not all of it. Some of that will be payroll taxes.
Oh, okay.
And then we've got, we have at least one position in there. Oh, no, there's a few positions in there that are directly budgeted on the general supplemental levy. And at least one, maybe more, that's at least partly budgeted out of rural. I did not have time to do all those allocations. I was gonna try last night. Yeah, didn't get that far with all this. But the bulk of it is under the 3.50.
Or thoughts?
Well, I've met with Amanda again yesterday, got some more information on some of this. I'm, I suppose we do both, the non-bargaining and the directors. Keep stumbling over this, then it's time to make a decision on that.
Did not have the breakout, just kind of across the board.
For those two, yes, the non-bargaining and the directors, those two.
Richie, can you, can you repeat the percentage amount?
3.25.
Thanks.
It's less than what the bargaining units are at on the average, but it's also reflecting, there's some of those positions that are, get a different matrix where they get bump ups. So that was kind of an in-between.
Here, can I go back and forth with that a little bit in the discussion?
Is that a motion, Rich?
I'll make it a motion.
Non-bargaining and the director.
Yes. We've got a motion for non-bargaining and the record, 3.25%. Is that a second?
I'll second that.
Is that a discussion? Got a motion and a second. Further discussion on it?
You know, I was, had a bit of an appetite for 3.5, but if nobody else, or any discussion on it.
3.5 is what you were thinking?
Yeah.
Were you thinking both? Non-barg for director and?
Just across, yeah, just kind of, we've been that, except for last year, well, comp study, we kind of broke that out and had.
Yeah, cuz last year, that would keep us closer aligned with bargaining units.
Yeah.
Cuz last year, you did not bargain at 4% and directors at 3.
Yeah. I think, wasn't that correct? Amanda, that was the first time we did that?
Yeah, that was the first time we had split that, yeah. So, and that was just, um, kind of based on what we were seeing and, um, and that it, you know, we also split like sworn officers and civilian. So that, we started doing some, this was, last year was the first time we did all different across the boards. It wasn't unified, that everybody gets the same across the board. So we were looking at splitting, just that was kind of unique to that year. Obviously, the unions continue, they're locked in with ones that are, but they're all right in the same ballpark. You're not seeing one that's getting 1.5%. They're all within that, you know, low for, the lowest being 2.5, which is conservation. They, almost all their positions got reclassified, except the naturalists, and the naturalists are getting 3 in their contracts. So, um, I'm just gonna make one point just for the record. I do have the new jail, the civilian non-sworn sergeants, and the dispatch civilian supervisors. Those are non-bargaining, but we have a scale separate from them, like what the sergeants have, and we just keep their range based on, on the low end 10%, on the high end 20% of the top paid dispatcher, which they promoted out, or the top paid DO, which they promoted out. So I'm just making a note that that is separate from this, and I'm not requesting any action. We've just always kept that for compression purposes. We follow exactly what the union gets. So they're gonna get in across the board, it's gonna be 3% because that's what the civilian, and that's ultimately, we saw the sergeants unionize the sworn, but they did not encompass non-sworn. So I'm just gonna keep with what even the sworn sergeants are doing in their union with those that are technically non-bargaining. Um, but it is different than like what you talk about non-bargaining, like an elections manager, HR, IT facilities. So I just wanna make that note, so they're kind of clarified for the record. So what you're voting on today is really those non-bargaining that are on the GS scale that aren't, um, that are basically not a civilian supervisor, civilian dispatch direct supervisor, or civilian sergeant direct supervisor. They just follow the union. Typically what they promote out of, and we just move it to a scale.
I know you provided several pages. You didn't make a recommendation, you had just given a range.
For which one?
For the ones we're talking about now.
Yeah, so we just budgeted at 2.5 and 3% for across the board. Um, I don't know that I've given really like a, I mean, that was a good starting point. I think 3.5 is fine. I think that is an appropriate number, 3.25 is okay as well. If you started going north of that, I'd probably say, meh, let's just scale that. Cuz the only ones that are north of 3, so like public health is getting 3.5, but the others are, are, it would be attorneys and the deputy sheriffs, which really no non-bargaining person actually, for role, actually supervises those that are already on a union or tied to an elected official salary, if that makes sense. So we're really trying to hit the non-bargaining management positions across treasurer's office, recorder, you know, um, auditor's office, IT, finance, roads, conservation. So. Think you're good with either one, really. And does, both will help us keep our position in the market where we want it, 95%.
So if we were at 3.5, that would total impact of that increase over the original proposal, is that? The line, the second line, is the, uh, the change from the original. Okay, so that would be a total of about 50,000. That sound about right, Michelle?
I'm assuming I.
Assuming those numbers were to keep.
Yeah.
And the 3, it'd just be the 0.5 or the 0.25 if we'd be adjusted? I mean, whichever we decide. Both of them?
Right now, you have a motion.
I know. And we're discussing, yeah.
So the, what I'm reading is that the original budget where they started was 3% for the non-bargaining and 2.5 for the non, uh, the directors?
Directors, yup.
So it wasn't 3, it was 2.5 for them. So it'd be a little bit more increase with that. But 20, extra 25,000, probably 6,000.
Those, those are, I don't know. So if you change to 3.25, it's an additional 10,000.
Yeah.
And so then if you change to 3.5, it's gonna be about double. Yeah.
I can, if I was gonna, I was gonna, I just wanted just to consider 3.5 is what I was thinking about. 3.33, I kind of put it in my head and took it out right away. Don't wanna start doing the, those kinds of.
So I, it's, having a little bit of trouble hearing, but Michelle, if we did the 3.5, approximately how much does that add to our shortfall in the, the general basic?
Well, the total additional is about 50,600, maybe. And I honestly, off the top of my head, I don't know how much of that is the general basic, because these positions are split all over. I, I have to do some work to divide it up.
Gotcha.
Mike was gonna say, we can take action on the 3.25.
Yeah, yeah, let's take action on the 3.25. Alright, one question? Alright, we've got a motion and a second on an increase of 3.25 for non-bargaining units, as well as non-elected directors. Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All the same side? Alright, motion carries, 3.25. Alright, item B, elected official salaries.
I was gonna say silence.
Can we see, um, Michelle, do you have access to Amanda's, um, scale? Uh, the one that had the percentage to market?
Various positions, like the kind of attorneys. So comparisons to market, market average state rank? Union board is 59%, but attorney is 90. Everyone else is right, 85, I guess the sheriff was 86.
Yup, and then her, her, with the reflecting, that helps.
Anyway, if you've got that on hand, yeah. And that was everybody, I think that was like you said, with the attorney at 90.
Yeah, that's a, so, uh, if you're looking, number 20, slide 14, Amanda's packet.
Okay, yup, I think I have that, Al, if you want.
So this, this is what would be reflected with HR's recommendation, again, is the board's operation, is all the comp board, realizing that Amanda was doing a lot of, HR was doing a lot of the work to look at comps. So Amanda, if you want to maybe touch on this slide and the recommendation for?
Yeah.
And five?
Yeah, but we, based on the data that we've seen, that currently elected positions and their deputies that are tied to their salaries are likely lagging the market by about 15%. With the exception of the county attorney who's lagging currently by about 10%. So that is a similar picture, what we've seen in the past for Black Hawk County, but we've taken a lot of measures in the past several years to align our wages so they are externally competitive with the market, which generally is other counties, similar to our size. We don't include Polk County, um, because they're just too large. But you're looking at, you know, Lynn County's got Johnson, Black Hawk, Dallas, Potawatomi, Dubuque, Woodbury, and Story. So this chart here shows a fiscal year 25 salaries today, the proposed salary, which is a 10% increase for treasurer, treasurer, recorder, auditor, sheriff, and then a 5% increase for the attorney. And then we are hedging that the market may move some, which I gave some of those, you know, what I anticipated recommendations were coming in, that we're expecting the market to move, where if you approve that recommendation, I would hope to see is at at least 90% for these positions, uh, next year, with the exception of, you know, the board. Again, the board is a little unique. Some boards throughout the top, largest counties have three or five members, so we kind of looked at that a little, you could look at it, you know, exactly from one salary to one salary for a board member, or as a total salary of the board. But for those that lead departments, this is extremely important, I think, that they, um, not only extremely competitive wages, but also internally equitable systems that we have with pay. That was, uh, so when you think about leadership roles in the non-elected, such as finance, public health, conservation, VA, HR, facilities, roads, you know, those areas that we would like, who are more competitive now at 95% to the market, what we're seeing today, we'd like the other department head elected roles to follow that as well, which also includes the board supervisors, so. And I think Michelle's been able to produce, you know, we had some requests last week, or two days ago, about, um, looking at different alternatives. Historically, with the comp board, some of those recommendations would come in, the board would just, you know, you could reduce them, guys now get to act as the comp board. Uh, so it's not to say that you could even, really could go with this recommendation, you could modify it lower or up. But, um, I do think the recommendation's in line with what we see across other counties, um, where we want to put ourselves at our leadership positions, um, and where we are with other non-elected department head salaries, so.
Maybe one note on this, I know that Michelle, she had just shown, there was the adjustment for recorder and treasurer to give back that. 10.2 for those positions, so that it's 108, 842 across those three.
And that's consistent with others, I, they're pretty much, I don't, I think we're the one, maybe the only one where they are different, and it's such a small amount.
Yup.
So yeah, that would be accepting, you know, Michelle's thought on just to make them equal. That does make sense for the type of work that they're doing. But again, yeah, so there are about 20, 21, I think, actually, adding a percentage of deputies, so that this impacts, um, you know, five of those being board members, and each other elected office has a elected official plus their percentage deputies, so.
Is the percentage increase across all for elected officials or can that vary?
It can, I think so, of course, Mike's not here. But, um, it can vary. I think there's been some rules. I know the board can lower theirs down to like zero, as, as low as zero. I don't think, if you're gonna lower, I think the rest have to lower equally, except the board. So if you're going to say, I'm going to lower the, you know, which again, it's kind of weird, because you guys are the comp board. So, you know, it's, it adds a little, I might need to see if Mike could answer that, but I would recommend right now with, you know, um, it was all driven on the market data, and I don't know, I'm not sure if I have that in one of the other slides where you can see, but it's pretty clear county attorney is at 90% today.
It's the next slide, slide 13. No, slide 11, slide 11.
There we go, okay, so, pretty uniform, really, to think about it, that, um, for those except the attorney, they're all about 15% behind, the attorney being 10% behind, so, I mean, I, I probably wouldn't recommend tweaking it too much more than what, uh, but if you were, but the board, certainly that one could be, um, I know for sure that the code allows for the board to really adjust theirs, kind of accordingly, lower and not lower everyone else's, but.
Yeah, we are separate, more or less.
Yeah, you kind of treat the board separate from the others.
Yeah, that's, that's what was.
As opposed to, you know, lowering like the sheriff only and that, yeah. If you're looking at the board, that's fine, but.
Typically, we, I mean, we've always done it that way until now, but the comms have been out. The others are.
But that's, you know, that statewide rank, again, I do, that's a good metric for us, you just think we're the fifth largest county, and even that county, Polk County, would like to see them break through the top 10 this next go. And even that county in Polk County would like to see them break through the top ten this next go around. Um, that's where I don't believe I have any directors that are at ten, eleven, or twelve, they're all seven, eight, six, so.
I think you did a great job with the recommendation. That was something that we were always trying to, count order to look at, paid more attention to the markets, things that you could show and share.
Yeah, I took some, you know, the comp board, I think, in it's, it just not alone, I mean, wages here have just been an area where we've known we've liked and definitely made some progress and, um, yeah, I think, uh. It is something to think about that you have leaders that manage non-bargaining roles, that they're continually more equitable, so it just makes sense that those. Um, opportunity, so.
Rich and I were talking earlier too, and I'd said, you know, there was that year we had the zero for the. And and for the most part, it must be for myself really, why we had done that when there had been recommendations to go higher was because starting the process and said it would be a better place to be after the comp study was completed. And then see where those positions would fare in the market and really take care of the people that we were looking at on staff. Taking care of that first and then kind of us as elected officials and others, then seeing where we were, so this really kind of does a good job of that, I think.
Yeah, I think.
Sort of level sets, right, we did add that year to zero.
Yeah.
The idea of being eighties, where we've got other staff, five percentile is is tough. Um, so it is gonna, it's gonna take us some work to get to where we're where we're.
And I would tell you, you know, again, if there's cer- certain positions, you do have a range where it does make sense to be. Little experience, it's a new role, new opportunity, like our ranges are around about plus or minus fifteen to twenty percent around midpoint being market, there was a time where our midpoint was so off though, that then we were more like seventy-five. And so with this group, they don't have ranges, that's just the way Iowa code is made, so, um, there is no well, the elected official comes in and they're gonna build up to this, it's essentially what you all said. So that's, again, it's not eighty-five percent can make sense, it just doesn't necessarily work for this group of employees, because this is the one salary, it doesn't really go up or down, there's no starting point, ending point, it's just what the mark going market is, going rate is, so. Other questions about?
With the counties that we're looking at comp size, the one thing, I know there's two counties for the attorney that are less than five, but there's three on here that are over five. I guess, I I don't say the attorney needs to be at six percent, not the five percent. Otherwise, we're gonna be going backwards with that position too.
Moving ahead with all of them, you just be anything because as a comparison to the others.
Yeah, because they're above, Woodbury is eight point five for the attorney and then two others are at six percent, so we're at five to fall behind on the average there.
It's possible Woodbury might be behind, I'd have to look at my data, it wouldn't surprise me if Dubuque and Woodbury are kind of, they tend, we tend to trend with them sometimes, so. It's possible they're looking at like, oh, our attorney's quite a bit behind, but, um, but yeah, and you can see here, so a five percent increase for the attorney goes from one sixty-two five to one eighty, right?
No, that's.
Oh, no, that's the market average, I'm so sorry.
Speaking average.
Thank you, I was like, am I looking at that right? So, do you have the other slide, was that the other one that showed that?
Fix it to one seventy.
So. There's the, there we go, so one seventy, so if you were to do like a six percent, I mean, it's not, it will help track closer to that. Because that base salary is larger, so it, you know, it's not like you have to say, well, let do the county attorney at ten percent, which I don't, you said six percent? Yeah, so those things are gonna, those with a larger salary, it's gonna make up some of that market gap, I guess.
But your thought, your thought was with five and it still gets. Abusive with the money. The attorney at nine, right?
Yes.
Um, yeah, but without knowing where Woodbury is, for instance.
Yeah.
To, they they could have been X percent lower than than our attorney.
Yeah, that's the kind of stuff.
Right, it's all, there could have been a, there could have been a.
That extra information on everybody that you don't know quite where they are.
Yeah.
And that, you know, each year, like, we will get, we won't be looking exact, we're not trying to get down to exactly the market, right? I mean, at the end of the day, we know these are just, they they look off, they are somewhat, you know, we can understand, you know, why, but the zero percent the one year, but also recognizing that these were kind of always lagging with previous comp board discussions and recommendations until and, yeah, and then, of course, we've had law changes, but back to blue, and back to blue really drove the attorney salaries up too, because it's like, well, you can't have the attorney. Sheriff, so, you know, there's just been a lot of changes with the attorney and the sheriff salary in the last few years.
Because we get bumps with both of those, so.
So, um, but I, I, yeah, six percent can make can have a positive impact as well and you kind of hedge that, if that market moves some at least, but. I haven't heard, you know, I think anybody would, you've heard from the, some of the elected officials previously and, um. Again, as long as we're making the right movement towards market, I think we'll be in good shape, so. And if you can get it done this year, if it makes sense to, uh, great, and if not, then we'll just try to look at it again and, uh. Hopefully next year, we can, at some point, it'd be great to look at where, kind of like we are with non-bargaining, where we're just adjusting between a small percentage as opposed to a bigger one.
Do you do with the equity, when you looked at that for us for several years, kind of?
Right. But not this.
What it's worth, according to this, uh, it's accurate, Woodbury County Attorney got one fifty, four sixty-seven prior to the eight and a half percent increase. Which makes sense that why they.
Why they're doing a little higher.
Increase, but that's to catch up.
See, and that's not gonna really hurt Brian, you know, because he's, or the county attorney, because they're higher, but it will, it'll move that, um, market somewhat, but I would be more concerned if I had, uh, like Story County, who's already maybe a little bit higher. I don't know, Johnson Scott, that they were all showing like eight percent, then I'd go, ooh, yeah, that market's gonna shift quite a bit, so, yeah.
I like that we're trying to align our staff for the most part too, and get them where everybody, we're looking at all the positions and fair.
And, yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, uh, and I just picked that because I saw where the other directors were, that they were on, for the most part, ninety-five percent, you know. Market and so, um, and that it did take a couple of years to get there. You could argue though, that really if you wanted to, if, and I think Nate, Sheriff Neff, mentioned that, that it could be like fifteen percent, which is, you know, that's true, because you assume the market moves, well, then everyone's at ninety-five, but, um, even with directors and with employees. That this whole last bargaining negotiation was around, we know we have room to grow, but it's gonna take multiple years. That's why you're seeing they cross the boards higher than what they've been, that's why we added steps, we've done things, it's gonna be so we can financially maintain that position as best we can, but, so even though it sounds like a lot, ten percent, in reality, um. I mean, it's right in line, it's defensible, and it really positions you to be at, hopefully, you know, worst case scenario, ninety percent. Um, but at best, maybe it's ninety-five, maybe the market doesn't move and and that's fine too, so. Definitely not proposing anything where you're gonna be like, oh, no, we went above market, shoot, now we have to really scale back next year, so.
Um, that year at zero, if there was some makeup you'd want for that too, like I said.
And we did have some areas that, uh, we had director vacancies, that we restructured positions and, um, had a lot of turnover in some key areas that, um. Yeah, now it's a great opportunity to hear where we can say, well, this is the last, this is really the last group to really get aligned.
I've had heartburn at the ten percent, but when I looked at it, even just going to nine percent, it isn't, we're a hundred dollars, it's not as thought it might be.
So it's not the money, it was kind of the percentage that was kind of seemed so high.
It was the percentage, yeah.
To say ten percent seems like, yeah, I mean, I I get it when you say.
It's a bad sense, right?
Yeah, people start talking, I think, like they say. Yeah, but when you've got the rationale for, here's what we did and here's what we didn't do and we want to just try to get everybody.
I do agree with trying to make the recorder and the treasurer the same, uh, rate as, or just so we are in line with that, so. If we move forward, I'd like to see that be part of the motion. One way to make sure that's part of the motion. Hey, I tried to say something.
Well, it's if you're willing to make the, if you want.
Well, I had one.
You're not comfortable with it now?
No, I I, when I went through and looked at the, the dollar figures, what it is between the, even the nine percent from the ten percent. It's, I'm gonna say it's miniscule, but it's not significant at all. And the adjustments are needed, I looked at that zero percent, it just. You just continually fall backwards when you do that kind of stuff.
Yeah, because we were looking at like the nines and fours and all the things that you could make in between, but now you're, what you're saying, dollar amounts kind of driving the, taking the recommendation.
This is Chris, um, I'll add, I think that, um, you know, we've touched every other part of the county with wage adjustments the last number of years to get us closer to the market, but this is the one area that we haven't touched. Um, so with, um, that said, I'll make a motion to accept this recommendation, um, from Human Resources Department. Um, with the note that we would adjust the recorder and treasurers upwards to have them match the auditors', um, uh, salary.
I'll second.
We've got a motion in a second, um, do we have any further discussion? And this is to be in favor of the human resource proposal. I think the human resource proposal included ten point two, is that correct? I know I didn't in this slide, but.
Michelle, yeah, she.
The recorder and the treasurer.
With those adjustments. More discussion. I'm gonna do one in different argument.
Not any further discussion, we've got a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 All same time? I still have a problem for two. No. But you got four to one?
I, I'm with Rich.
All right, motion carries, we to two, uh, I O C, sheriff's vehicle maintenance expenses.
I don't have much to say about that one, ask. Of the maintenance expenses rural. I don't, we don't have a lot of good information, I, I was comfortable with forty. And, oh, forgot, my budget goes on my worksheet and. I'm sorry, um, anyway, that increases taxes in the rural by the forty and helps with the general fund gap of the forty.
So it's forty thousand?
That's the amount I'm proposing anyway. Yeah, I apologize, I'll, and we'll look at the other worksheet here in a bit.
Percentage wise.
It's hard to say, it's, um, they have some years where they paid for some really large repairs. I, I struggled, I don't have enough history to really have a good number, so I. Hopefully, we're gonna track it, yeah.
Well, we're budgeting how much in the general.
Oh, if you're right, budget's about a hundred, I guess, not.
Right, so then.
That includes other vehicles that aren't rolling, it, no, they all end up in the same pot.
But if we're, what, so we're at a hundred in the general and forty in the rural, or sixty now in the general?
Well, that would be the same, right, that's what it would be, yeah.
Right.
After this.
Is there any further discussion on moving forty thousand dollars from the general, uh, from the general's budget of a hundred thousand for the sheriff vehicle maintenance expense, moving forty thousand over to rural? I think that's fair. We're, we're shifting a lot from general to rural. We are, because it is life sizing to some extent, if we're talking about, if if we're at eighty. If we're eighty, um, on the staff side, they're presumably driving a car there. I don't know.
And your numbers are hypothetical, but. Yeah, they are, yep.
I mean, the alternative is that everyone's paying for those rural services. Yeah. Which, when it gets down to it though, what I can speak to is that the deputies are super helpful, we have chaos going on in the city. And, um, there's a lot of things that we couldn't do without them too, so. So, yeah, everybody does pitch in, um, because I would see it just from a, from a citizen's standpoint, that it would, it would appear that their primary responsibility would be to the county jurisdiction, rural and so forth, but, um. I think we have a really good partnership with them, um, when it comes down to it, so. Those folks in the rural also see W P D, rural fire, super halls, right, like they, they see those urban departments coming in as needed. As well as, right, it is a, it's a two-way street there. Yep. Is there a motion, um, or further discussion? And this is to pull. This is to pull forty thousand from the sheriff vehicle maintenance expense line, which is currently at a hundred. Pull forty of that into the rural. Rural.
Is that a number you're comfortable with too?
Um, he chose not to have an opinion, I guess I'll say. He told me that he relies on us to make those determinations. That was his party, and day was a very busy day for him, I realized Tuesday night at ten, I saw the news, I didn't know it. I was bored of meetings, so, and I couldn't reach him yesterday, I tried, so I, you'd have to wait.
Yeah, I I would rather wait, I know.
We can, yeah, we can, we can, yeah, we can do that on Tuesday meeting.
Michelle, does waiting on this decision impact your ability to get things uploaded in time?
Well, you know, that one at least is pretty straightforward, but it does mean I, yeah, I can't do it until we choose, so. But.
But we could give you that number.
At least it's not, you know, it's only one, affects two funds on its one amount, it's much easier to deal with than.
Salaries.
Yeah, the non-bargaining in particular, I mean, even the electeds could wait, but, um, that's the stuff that gets hard to get all those changes in.
So long as we make a, a lot of progress today, in good shape then, right, for Tuesday? Hopefully.
Those salaries helped a lot.
All right, I hear that we want to table this discussion until Tuesday for I O C.
Have to, but I, I'd like to have some weigh-in on from Nate.
Just find and make a call, but, you know. Well, if he, if he's to come back and say, but he'd prefer that we didn't. Um, then that comes out, should we exceed that amount, the budget for, then that just comes out of the, uh, general fund then, to support any vehicle maintenance?
Right, correct.
And this is, this is the initial, right, this isn't the final, so if we were, if we were, we could bring that back. We could bring that back out of the rural if we chose to after hearing from Nate, um, and if since this would likely come out of unbalanced anyways, it wouldn't change, it wouldn't change our general levy.
Still you, right, because I can't raise the general levies.
Yeah, but you can't, you can't raise rural, I, correct?
Not after we publish, but.
So if we were to, if we were to take that action today, we would be able to make an adjustment.
I need that how, you can. Yeah, but I kind of undo that later.
Yep.
Yep.
Would have more information would have, but if everybody's comfortable with voting, that's fine.
You have some type of a motion, I'm gonna move on item D.
Yep.
Alright. Sixty-four, any fund review?
We've already had this conversation. I just wanna put it up for you. So for fiscal twenty-six. Nate's, you know, best estimate is that more revenue will be down. So in order to fund the security contract and a deputy. Out of the sixty percent side, we will be. Using fund balance in that project of sixty-two thousand. I anticipate there's likely only be fifty-three thousand left, so you, you'll be in the hole, I think, by June of twenty-six. And of course, you know, I won't know that for sure. Gotta get past June of twenty-five. Um, the forty percent side. We are not funding, that doesn't fund the deputy that, that at this time, that funds what's shown on here, some software that they use and then the social work app and range expenses. So that revenue declining actually makes that forty percent actually use fund balance for twenty-six as well, but only ten, about ten thousand seven hundred. And they do have fund balance in that, so they'll still have maybe a million, even if we do all that, but those are very. Um, concerning, I guess, trends into the future, right? Um, because we're not. We're really not paying any one-time expenses out of their, it, their, their ongoing. And if that funding source declines further, then. These other decisions have to be made, but I just wanted to remind you about that. And also been talking about the attorney fine collection project quite a bit. So I learned some more about that last week, and this is a summary of the revenue and expenses for the last several years. And you can see, I believe, as near as I can tell, we started funding a part of a deputy, well, we may have funded a part of one in fiscal twenty-one, but fiscal twenty-two. Started funding a deputy out of the fine collection. And once we started doing that, our annual, our expenses. So that's another project where we're going down. If we continue to pay similar things from that. I, yeah, I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that. For how security is being difficult to find.
Just to make sure, make, uh, understanding this correctly, the sixty-forty is funded initially from, uh, post-conviction time served, right? Is that different than the commissary fund?
It is definitely different from the commissary fund, a whole separate fund. Um, that is a question for someone in.
Okay.
Like safety, I, I don't know about the post-conviction or if it's anyone that stays in the jail. That I don't know.
Yeah, well, so.
Oh, you know what, right in post-conviction, that's.
That might be Chris. You probably know.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But, but that's the seven bucks a day that they're, okay.
And we, we have two streams. They do allocate a little bit of their fine. Revenue to there as well. So that's that second row showing on there is a portion of fines revenue.
And this is more of just sort of for our.
Where, um, I, you know, I'm, I'm gonna hope that.
Things.
That we don't spend all the sixty percent, you know, I hope maybe our estimates aren't a lot, but otherwise, we really should be adding that eighty-five hundred that shows us completely going in the hole into. Levy, making that hole larger yet again. Because the attorney still has fund balance, I think I, I put on here, that can keep going in the hole there for a while, but hopefully you're gonna solve that as well.
Back, back on the room and board one?
Yes.
Scroll back up. So the one thirteen for deputies, is that?
Just an estimate of the cost of one deputy, yeah.
Salary, or is that salary and benefits? My question there.
I, that should be everything.
So then, is a portion of that applicable and supplemental and not to our, to our general?
It could, you could potentially do that.
Right, and that could help our eighty-four hundred shortfall, not, only for this year, um, but.
It could, yep.
Well, this is the part I'm not clear about. When you talk about the end of the year, is it possible if we have funds and rollover that they could be designated to go to this to make that wall? Am I missing something there with that as well?
I prob.
I, I don't under.
I would not supplement, I don't think, a project like this with general funds. Cuz then you're taking funds that are unrestricted and.
Restricted.
Putting them somewhere where.
Okay, that's a part I don't understand yet, I'm still learning.
Versus what, what we've got a shortfall here, we could pull those dollars out of unrestricted funds, out of federal funds or whatever. Probably two different. It's not your shoes, it's not your shoes, but it's just.
Well, it's.
Put it on the left-handers, right, ones easy, yeah.
It just becomes really difficult to track all that and fill all these little pots. I mean, if the purpose of the pot is to pay for this, then we should pay for it, I hear. Or we should change how, what we charge into the pot, I think. I think that would be a way to do it than try to keep track, for a pretty large organization to keep track of such small things, really.
Typically have a full jam.
Pardon me?
And typically, we have a full jam. So we need to look at some solutions.
Well, sometimes at least, yeah.
Well, collection efforts are different.
I, I think some of that is changes are being made because of lawsuits and things, so. We may not be collecting it or collecting it that rate we've been.
One of the things we can't control, we just wait and see what happens.
You're right, yep, yeah.
Good FYI, but.
Yeah, I just.
Eventually, this is gonna happen. The sixty percent is just gonna have to come out of general. And apparently, that's at this rate next fiscal year in FY twenty-seven.
Potentially, yes. Yep.
Do you, it didn't have to be today, didn't have to be during budget, but at some point, when we get, hopefully after budget, we can have another discussion on sixty-four, some track. Um, of what revenues have been, so we can see. The steep decline.
I mean, it's been running, there is a decline in this current year. Um, don't remember where we ended twenty-four. We were as high as three hundred. And I, I think maybe twenty-four mine ended about sixty-sixties. But we did see a chunk go down in twenty-twenty-four, and I, don't hold me to that cuz I need to look it up.
Yeah.
And so that's why, you know, I don't think he's being super conservative to bring that down. That's what he saw happening in twenty-four and what is so far happening in twenty-five. So that's why he brought it down to forty. I, I do agree with what he's doing based on history. I mean, there may be other factors that could change things, like anything in our budget, but, yeah, he did.
You knew really big streams.
Yep.
We're working on it.
Yeah, I know what you are.
Yeah, we're bored.
Thank you, thank you for doing that.
Ready to go to the next item?
Yeah, that's what we did, attorney five, so community funding.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a handout about that. That's just a decision left to be made. I wasn't sure, based on conversations Tuesday, I'm not sure you're gonna talk about that any further. I just didn't want to lose it for all this.
And you included in your numbers one hundred thousand.
Right.
Plus separately fifty thousand for food bank.
Yep.
And twenty-five thousand for cattle.
Right.
So this is, this is kind of community funding in some regards, same, but different.
Well, I used to come out of that pot, so that's why I wanted to, yeah, right, let's clear about what I've done. Hopefully to help my memory and yours. Yeah, okay, so fund balance trend is next. I was asked about this. I brought the slide again.
Do we, I mean, let's not go past community funding, let's, let's make.
Oh, okay, okay, I'm sorry, I.
Sorry, yeah, no, I, I, we can start crossing this off.
I, I'm curious on the food bank, they receive, so it's Northeast Iowa, they receive funding from every single county? Is every county giving them fifty thousand bucks or is it just Black Hawk?
I don't know if she's provided that for, you know, every county.
No.
I know that they had been approaching other counties, but I don't think they're funding at our same level, but this, but the funding does go just to support the pantry that's located here.
Okay.
Dedicated use, even though their position might be larger than this.
Right.
Yeah, the, the Cedar Valley Food Pantry that.
Okay, okay. And with the cattle congress marketing reimbursement funding of twenty-five thousand. So, it is understanding that, that pays for marketing to get people to come to the fair, and then the theory behind that, bring tourism, local option, sales tax, revenue.
Well, they've come to us and shared a list of other counties doing part of their fair, and Mike sent an email that sort of called out how we can fund.
But that is in code, that we can do fairs.
Correct, yeah, but we can also do general purpose or public purpose, I think is, um, which is what the community funds have, have banned. So.
Yeah.
We've got a couple different avenues that we could fund. Theory is behind designating those for marketing expenses, it helps them. Invest, cuz that tends to be a spot where folks will cut back, is on the marketing side, and then you have less folks knowing and less ability to generate revenue.
Because of that discussion, I think you included the twenty-five for cattle congress already in.
Yeah, budget adjustment.
And, and also the fifty thousand.
Yep.
So it's not really in this community fund that could be for other nonprofits or. So it's really, to me, almost deciding if we wanna continue doing that and what.
Yeah, we voted Tuesday on, on the fifty and the twenty-five.
Yeah, yeah.
So really, this is, we wanna.
So in reality, it's a hundred and seventy-five, the fifty, the twenty-five. And the hundred is kinda up for grabs then, for whoever applies.
You have application process. We talked about maybe looking at that criteria and stuff before we put.
Yeah, I like that.
So it meets our, what we'd like to see happening in the community too, and doesn't waste their time and effort, and it is kind of a small pool that we have funding that we'd make available.
And that's been around fifteen to twenty-five options the last couple of years?
It, it's grown the last, yeah. I was gonna say, we had that huge amount. I think that's.
Well, one of them was like seven hundred fifty thousand.
I dumped that to a million. Sorry, yeah, that was very, to have that kind of a list, yeah.
First time, I'd say.
Yeah, I think we need to, we need to refine the process to this point, um.
At least could try it. I mean, you can see, I, I think if everybody'd be comfortable with a hundred thousand, assuming, like I said, we already did tell Congress and, and that's to see how we do with them this year.
Do we get a report from Cal Congress and when we, any of them that we put money to, how the money? Well, those are, those are reimbursed dollars, correct? So there's an agreement.
They are.
Michelle and Mike drafts for each of those entities, and it's specific to their stated purpose and their application, which.
Thank you.
So the marketing, they were.
Yeah. That one we're waiting on.
About twenty-five thousand dollars to pay their vendor. So it, we paid them like during the fair, so I, they, and then, of course, I have not gotten any follow-up after that.
Yeah, they still owe us an update, it, fifty thousand, they were gonna.
For the fifth, yeah.
And even.
Sure. Because we need to see what those inquiries are.
Since that's what we were trying to help.
Yep.
Yeah, so those kind of things, and we can ask them at any time. It's stated usually in our contracts and on, online. That we could almost like request them at any time to come and do a report. They're supposed to, most of the others did one.
Yeah.
They're always happy to do it.
I just met with Deb last week, and she, she mentioned to me that, that she knew she needed to come up.
That's.
It's, it's on their radar, it's just a matter of schedule.
Do you usually pick a time or a month where you have people come in and make the request?
We, we had, we used to always during, during budget for the most part.
Okay.
It was just, that was, that was, that was just, there are a couple of days we took and then got those done. Um, it has changed over the years a couple of times too, because we were gonna refine and do something differently. So then we said, okay, if we just put the money aside. We'll get on, um, application process, so that it's ready, because the year doesn't start till July one, you know, so we do have time, even after budget, if that's the case.
So then with the community funding, what are we gonna do with that for now then?
Just to set.
Set in a moment, if we want, if we want.
What that pool is.
Okay.
To do it, there is, I guess, agreement to do it and.
So we both, uh, Tuesday, set the fifteen, twenty-five in stone then, okay. So then now it's a matter of keeping, raising or lowering the hundred K?
Although nothing's set in stone.
Nothing's set in stone.
So there are things also subject to change that we're even approving now.
Okay.
So just so you know.
Plumb and narrowly set with a hundred, hundred thousand.
Yeah.
And it helps, it helps give Michelle direction.
And Michelle, last year, um, I believe we had, we had the hundred thousand that came out of the levy, but we also allocated an additional amount out of, um, reserves. Can you recall what that amount was?
The intent was to be two hundred and fifty out of reserves.
I kinda like to avoid that for this time, at least for this year, until we see where we're at, since we're making some adjustments.
Yeah.
We have to make.
Couldn't agree more.
Is there a comfort level for still doing it? It's not the. I mean, we have, we have to decide whether we wanna do it, comfort level for everyone to do it, or we need two separate types of motions, or we just need one to do it for, at a hundred thousand dollars for twenty-six for now? Anybody have a thought?
I think the major thing for today would be what we want out of the, the three fifty levy. And then, if there is further discussion on additional support outside of that, fund balance, so we can do that, uh, at this time, we can do it at any time. Including at those presentations. If, if we did that two years ago, I think we, we funded higher than allocated out, given the number of presentations and the need that was presented.
Yeah.
We funded the rest out of, out of reserves after we had heard from the applicants. First of all, by essay stating at the onset that we're gonna fund obviously X amount out of the, out of the levy and an additional lot of reserves, you know, sort of. State our intent at the front end.
Well, we get it moving, I'll, I'll make the motion, we do the hundred thousand.
And that's, that's Michelle in the levy right now, correct?
Yes.
Sometimes it increases.
That's what I meant, no.
I mean, it isn't, it isn't, because we have a gap, but.
Yeah.
But it's already built into what.
Built into your numbers and your numbers.
Yeah, yes.
So we've got a motion and a second and a hundred thousand, um, out of the general levy.
Yeah, I've already timed doing that one. It, it's just one of those things. I think we always took it out of taxes before, I think, wasn't it, Chris? I was gonna say, is this the last?
Oh, that's, that's what I said, out of, out of.
Out of.
Sorry, out of our three fifty.
Okay.
Yeah, out of the general, sorry. Yeah, out of the general, sorry.
General reserves.
Yeah, no, hundred thousand out of, out of the.
Sorry, pardon me, this is you seconded that, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Keep track of that.
Just, just to be clear, because it's breaking up a little bit, this is to be out of the, the general basic levy, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Both same side? Couple projects, sir, no, sorry, fund balance trend.
All right, someone asked questions about this, so I, you have seen a version of this slide before, but I made it a little more cluttered and added so few. So, uh, I was asked really how much we were using, well, it's a couple of things, so this shows you our general unassigned fund balance, it's actual numbers up through June, January, twenty-four, and that blue attempt to be a vertical line, it isn't perfect, but that shows when we started using the million dollar turnover pool, and also coincidentally about when I started working on the budget versus, um, yeah, the personnel change then. So, the, the significant things that I see as I look back in history is we have the COVID pandemic about fiscal twenty to maybe fiscal twenty-two, I don't know when you really say we're out of that. And then, in fiscal nineteen, we had the sale of Country View, so we had two years of extremely large growth in fund balance, and that would be fiscal nineteen, the four point one million, and then, um, fiscal, let's see, from twenty to twenty-one, I think, a growth of five, five million. But the last two years, for fiscal twenty-two, the increase in our unassigned fund balance was just under four hundred thousand, and for fiscal from, or, sorry, twenty-three, at the end of twenty-three, it was just under four hundred thousand. Then for the year ending June of twenty-four, is, was six, almost six hundred and thirteen. So, the last two years, we've seen that number come down dramatically. Probably it was partly due to that turnover pool, I don't, you know, it's not the whole thing, but. So then, what we're showing in the future is what commitments we have today, that we think we know about today, taking out the general fund, and just assuming people are going to spend what they request. Well, that's why you see the chart starting to decline, it started leveling off about fiscal twenty. I think, because we've made some commitments now for twenty-five, we're gonna see that change, unless operations really happen differently than we think they will right now. So, then I did a chart for what our actual payroll savings to budget has been over the last several years. I went back to fiscal nineteen, because I wanted to get a pre-pandemic year to, because I do think the pandemic does cause some things in there, so fiscal twenty-five through the end of January, we do have savings right now of about six hundred and thirty thousand, that's, in terms of our payroll year, that's about fifty-six percent of the payroll a year. That savings as a percentage of the payroll budget is about five percent, and our budget and turnover factor was really a million ninety-eight. And I, I didn't, I tried to put a guess in it on assigned fund balance growth, but fiscal twenty-four, our payroll savings, and, and this is just salaries, this is not a creative benefit, about one point one five million savings for fiscal twenty-four, that was six percent of budget. We had, and we had budgeted to save a million, and then our unassigned fund balance grew six hundred and twelve. So, that means about half a million of that growth came from other, other things, either revenue that was higher than expected, or other types of expenses that were. In fiscal twenty-three, our actual payroll savings was a million and four thousand, about five percent again, as our percentage of the payroll budget, and we did, that was the first year that we did see the million dollar turnover factor. That year, we saw our unassigned fund balance grow by three hundred and, ab- above that, basically, above that million.
So, effectively, we didn't use the million in F I twenty-four?
No.
We still rolled over three hundred and ninety and six hundred and twelve.
Correct, correct. Fiscal twenty-two, the payroll savings was just under six hundred thousand, I was kind of surprised, only three percent of payroll. I'm unable to determine how the salaries were really budgeted then, so I am just putting unknown in that turnover factor, because somebody doing it differently could have accounted for that as they budgeted in the department payrolls. And the unassigned fund balance grew about one point five million. Then you go back to fiscal twenty-one, payroll savings at nine forty-one, we see the number about five percent, or five percent below budget, and that's the year that our fund balance grew five million. I know probably two million of that would have been CARES money, and I know there was a lot of vacancies, particularly Department, I think, or.
COVID.
Um, but there's still, just quite a bit in there. Fiscal twenty, when COVID really hit, if you remember, things were, you know, the governor shut things down mid-March, our casino was closed till mid-June, so that affects gaming revenue, there were just a lot of, a lot of things going on in fiscal twenty. So our payroll savings to budget for that year was just about a million forty. That was six percent savings to the payroll budget, and really surprisingly, we did grow the fund balance that year by almost one point four million. Fiscal nineteen, our payroll savings were two point six million, nine percent of the budget, and the unassigned fund balance grew four point one million, and I think a large share of that is Country View, so. It's just a different way to present how that turnover, I mean, I'm saying it's primarily payroll, but it is the net of everything we do, right, because that's where the balance comes.
So payroll savings from F I twenty-five, that is through January of the.
I, I thought it made sense.
Action.
As if you look, if you look at our, you know, we approved our first payroll in July, paid for days worked in June, and in our payroll, or our general ledger system, we actually put that back fiscal year, so.
So six, six forty-two gets us through our first six months.
Basically, it does, a little bit more than that, yeah, six and a half, maybe, that, that's accurate, yep, yeah. And the, so it's just anecdotal, the health department mentioned at their quarter meeting Wednesday morning that they have only one vacancy right now, which is really unusual for their department. They had accounted for probably, probably at least a third of our payroll savings in mo- in all these years, I bet, at least a third or more. So, I know there's a change there, now they have vacancies early in the year, it all, even about, the sheriff's office, thought they were pretty well staffed, like up until November, where we had a large number of retirements. And, so they do have things right now, and even after payouts, but I don't know what their schedule is for being able to fill all those. So, and there are, there are vacancies in other positions, I know we have heard our number of vacancies is declining this year, but I don't know how long it's gonna stay that way, things change.
But we budgeted one million ninety-eight thousand?
Well, we basically did it, because as I pointed out Tuesday, we, we didn't really close the full gap last year, when, when we made the one six million in adjustments, so I did, I did just add that to this on here. I. Then the, the current fund balance commitments, I, I am leaving that turnover pool on there, that million, because we don't, it, it doesn't go anywhere, it's sitting in our unassigned fund balance, so I need to put it back into our year that we're budgeting to do it, we may not, but it's in there. And then I've put in the two fifty in community funding that we budgeted to take out of reserves, the commitment for the Waterloo project, and then you've, you've approved ARPA projects that will require approximately, or at least, I'm not sure what the right word right now, another eight hundred and thirty-five thousand that needs to come from our fund balance. And then, a year ago, you approved the twenty-five equipment requests, I'll call them, to come out of Ca- out of fund balance, and that's a million twenty-four. So, that's why I am assuming right now that we will see some drawdown on our reserves this year. And this is, this is against the side you've already seen, so.
I think that's all we have on the.
Well, unless you want to.
Capital.
Capital, yeah.
One, two, two votes.
Is that it?
Four, two, two votes.
Yeah. All right, guys, let's go. Um, but when you show the projections for future years?
This one?
Yeah, is that decrease, that, that projected decrease, twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, it's about a million, is that, is that projecting a million, where are the, where's that million decrease projections from?
That's really primarily from the equipment.
Roll over, oh, okay.
It's from the, the capital requests for each year.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't, I mean, that it wasn't factoring in the rollover.
I don't believe it is.
That, not to say that we wouldn't use it, but it's, it's, it's a really hard one.
Right. So what, when I did that, I took that million out once.
Yeah.
And not, I did not keep taking it out.
Okay.
Um, but I do, I will, I will have to keep showing it, I think, right here.
Yeah.
Just because it is a potential, right, because we don't, so when I'm doing that, I, this is an experiment. In a former life, we would, like, budget hiring delays. So we would actually pull the money out of the various departments, do you have a vacancy? How, however, and that, you know, people didn't really enjoy that very much, so I, I just tried to come up with a creative way to do it, so what we're, so I'm not taking that million dollar turnover pool, that is not being deducted from anybody's departmental budget, so every one of your departments has authority to spend their full personnel budget, and if everyone did, we would, that's when we'd.
So.
A million.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it was to be working, but.
So it's kind of a projection process, it's, it's a cushion.
Well, it really, it is, it's, it's say, taking away any cushion, it's a reverse, we're, we're, we're assuming that departments are not going to spend their, all of the resources we've allocated to them, so it, it's a negative cushion, really. But we're using our general fund balance as the cushion.
Correct.
So, as that balance declined.
But they're still budgeting.
They have finance people that want you to do that anymore, I mean, there would be a point where I would not want you to do that anymore.
But they're currently budgeting, assuming full strength.
Yep.
So that they don't have a mandatory two months, three months, however long waiting.
Right.
That, we're saying, as a board, you've got these dollars set aside that.
And as long as.
In the event you're fully staffed, all, everything's as it was, then.
And you would draw it down.
Yeah.
Yep. And if we did not have generous reserves.
It's our overdraft funds.
Well, it kind of is.
Yeah.
I don't know if I like that term.
I, I.
As a voice person. I know, I know, but, yeah, it, that's why, as long as we have extra reserves, that works. That's all I have, unless you want to switch to capital.
Uh. Oh, we're gonna take action on capital today anyways.
It's.
Capital is all gonna come out of reserves this year.
Well, no, a big chunk of it's bond issue.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Bond issue and reserves, I, I move ahead with starting, at least getting a pre-levy done, so that we can um, include that first year repaying a bond issue in our levy this year, I, there's, there's some legal hoops we need to jump through.
And then if we were to decide, we all move forward on this project or that project before.
Yeah.
But if it's finalized, we've got time to make that adjustment.
A, a little time, yeah.
Yeah.
You will see all the projects, then, the, the language will cover all of them, probably for right now.
Yeah.
Your sources are gonna be up.
And that protects us.
Correct.
So that we can, we do have some time to make that before that's finalized.
Yep.
So, March fifth is our deadline for this initial, is that right?
Yeah, the debt service, I don't think that debt service levies are very part of that, so, um.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I don't know what. So I, I think, I, I'm just gonna keep moving ahead with that, um, not hearing objections to, to everything, because that'd be where you would stop, is projects that you're requesting bond money for, and I don't think anyone's expressing that right now, so we'll, we'll keep moving forward.
Yeah, as I understood it, uh, raising that debt service levy from sixteen up to twenty-four cents-ish, right? That helps to cover all the capital projects.
That covers.
Going forward.
Us issuing, yeah, covers us issuing five million dollars this year, first year payment on that issue is about five hundred and eighty thousand, so that's, that's what's creating the twenty-four cent levy from the sixteen. So, the other, once we hit, once we do that, I, uh, let's see, I do have a slide. If I can get there. Um, anyway, once you hit that level, we're gonna be able to stay pretty much at that level in the future bond issues as well, I will tell you, I'm kind of front-loading this first bond issue, because our debt service is getting very paid off. Red, I'm gonna replace, um. It does allow us to have a very, very low debt service going forward, and that, I didn't even take into attempt to make estimates of future property value, I just use the same, but you'll, so, we can do a five million dollar issue, potentially do another five million next year, um, and then six million which toward road building and maybe tw- I don't know, somewhere in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine. At twenty-nine, right now, the requests are lower, so I'd bring it in half. But that may change as that date gets close.
So when you say that, Michelle, was that including, included in when you're doing that graph as well?
This is a separate issue from that graph.
Okay.
So that graph only counts for the things that don't qualify for bonding.
Okay.
It's one of the, that was one of the disappointing things that I discovered. I think most of it came because of House File seven eighteen, they took away, uh, the attorneys will call it a catch-all provision that counties could use to issue debt primarily for vehicles and equipment, that went away, so, and, coincidentally, the county used to be able to fund most of their equipment requests out of the three fifty levy, that's one of the things that has
dramatically changed, we now don't.
I don't have any room in there unless we make some other dramatic changes. So I was trying to figure out how we were gonna buy equipment, obviously sheriff's cars need to be replaced, and I know we went through not in great shape, so that's why I'm suggesting to use our fund balance to do that, because I don't know how else we're going to, unless laws change. So what's in here is only things that are eligible for bond, under the current law. And on the capital summary that you got last night, that's all, they're separate. And on the capital summary that you got last night, that's all, there are separate columns for each year. One says bonding, one says operating. This is operating is what I'm saying. We have to take out of fund balance columns that say bonding, obviously, and we're pending for bond issues.
Have any other slides or discussion?
We don't want to do capital.
Just my thoughts on capital stuff is I'm satisfied personally with the way that's all set. We gotta be careful moving forward. And I don't want to do anything if, if Linda is not here too, so.
Yeah.
Unless my mind changes between now and Tuesday. And you, you know where I'm at with that.
Right. So you want to plan for Tuesday's work session to look more closely at capital?
Yeah, at least discuss it. Good to know. Under the wire. Shift the trigger.
I'll triple check that, but I think that's correct. And again, if I put that in, put in a payment number. Would have some flexibility later.
All right. Do you have anything, everything you need from us in the form part? Motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye. This is adjourned.
Thank you.